Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the City of Victoria Special Meeting of September 8th, 2023. At this time, Ms. Hilberg, would you call or roll?
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Deligarza? Councilwoman Solis?
Here.
Councilwoman Crocker?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Councilman Lockren?
Here.
And Mayor Protim Young?
Here.
And Mr. Bo- or Mayor Bocknight will not be joining us today.
Correct, thank you. At this time, I invite everybody to stand and join with me in the pledges.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Once again, good afternoon. Happy Friday to everybody. Mr. Garza, do you have any announcements or reminders?
Good afternoon. Whoa there, that was loud, I apologize. Good afternoon, Mayor Protim and council members. Just a friendly reminder that our first regular council meeting in October was moved up a day and will take place on Monday, October 2nd. And hopefully, everybody can participate in some national night out events that Tuesday evening. Aside from that, I got nothing.
All right, there's a reminder that there is a cleanup scheduled for tomorrow.
Yes, yeah, great reminder.
Caught you off guard, didn't I?
You did, yeah. But in any case, yes, we have a cleanup.
To sign up, you can go to the KVB website, correct?
That's right. Oh, that was funny.
All right. Hope to see everybody there. Any public or employee recognitions today?
No, sir.
Oh, that's my favorite part of the agenda. Any items from council? All right, very good, moving on. At this time, I'll open up the citizens' communication. Anybody wishing to speak, now is your opportunity. Seeing none, I'll close citizens' communication and we will move into city manager reports.
All right, well, we have several topics to discuss with you this afternoon. I feel confident we'll be able to get through them in a timely manner. I know a couple of you have some commitments and might need to leave early and so we'll make sure we get through it as quickly as possible. The first item is an update on the Active Transportation Master Plan and I'm going to turn it over to Julie to introduce our consultant.
Good afternoon. So I want to take a minute to introduce Mrs. Ellen Soul with Alliance Transportation Group. They are the consultants working on our Active Transportation Master Plan. She's got a short presentation that she'll go through because we are wrapping up the plan so we are in the home stretch. This is just kind of giving you an overview of where we've been and some preliminary recommendations that will be finalized over the next month or so and you will see this plan in front of you before the end of the year to request adoption.
Okay, thank you so much, Julie. Thank you for the opportunity to come and present to you today. Julie asked me to spend about 20 minutes kind of giving you an overview of the plan and then save about 15, 20 minutes for any questions and discussion about it. I'm going to start. Okay, sorry, I'm short. So I'm going to go ahead and start by giving you an overview of the plan. I'll tell you a little bit about the public engagement that has already occurred. We had some really, really great and voluminous public input, which has been fantastic. Going to talk to you a little bit about the draft network recommendations that you're seeing a copy of in front of you. If you don't have a copy of it, I believe Maggie has some extra copies as well. And then we'll talk about next steps and what you can expect out of us over the coming weeks as we begin to wind down this planning process. So I want to go ahead and start by setting the stage for why the city and the MPO decided to actually go ahead and put together an Active Transportation Master Plan. First and foremost, it's to improve safety. When people have dedicated spaces to walk and to bike, it reduces crashes. It's a proven fact. So we, as we approach this planning process, we want to make sure that we're creating connected networks so we want to make sure we're getting people from where they live to where they want to get to and where they need to get to. To improve health is another one of the goals of this plan and something we heard a lot about in the public input. People really want to get out and walk and bike to improve their health. I'm sure I'm not the only one who's wearing one of these and counting my steps all the time. Whenever we convert a trip from a car to walking and biking, it really helps us out. We want to make sure that we're providing equitable access to transportation so this is something we really take a close look at when we're making our recommendations and prioritizing them, is making sure that we're suggesting network recommendations and facilities that are going to reach everybody in the community, especially those who may not have access to a car or perhaps have been cut off by previous transportation decision-making processes. And then, of course, supporting economic growth. All these trips that we talk about that are on foot or by bike, those create economic activity unless they're a recreational trip. If anybody's bought real estate lately, maybe you saw a walk score. Places that are walkable actually have higher home values so it supports economic growth. And finally, to increase the resiliency of the transportation system. When we convert those trips to a walking trip or a biking trip, we actually can reduce our greenhouse gas emissions from traffic. So when we started our planning process back towards the beginning of 2023, we started by taking a look at existing conditions. What's the current state of active transportation in Victoria? To do this, we talked with folks here about the existing facilities, received data. We looked at your existing plans, like the Paseo de Victoria. We look at something called latent demand. I'll talk about this in a moment. This is like what the characteristics of the community are and the built environment and how that impacts where demand might actually be. We look at crashes because safety is a big issue that we wanted to make sure we're addressing. Level of stress is another one and I'll talk about this in a second too, but this one's actually about characteristics of the road itself and that's how that distinguishes from latent demand. And then we looked at gaps in the sidewalk. Not necessarily every gap in every sidewalk, but those that are in really important areas where people need to walk and bike, especially by schools, other destinations, where the transit system is running. So I'll kind of go through these real quick, real quickly here. So latent demand, I mentioned, this is, you know, this is an indicator of how we figure out, well, you know, if there aren't bike facilities and if there aren't sidewalks, like, would people walk if there were? Would people bike if there were? And so we look at a number of different factors that say, if all these other ingredients are here, would these facilities get used? And the answer is yes. You know, pretty good population density, pretty good intersection density, got transit. We've got tons of destinations, parks and schools and city facilities, rec centers. We look at where seniors live. We look at where households with children are. We look at where households have fewer cars, where households that have fewer cars. Look at all these factors together and it gives us kind of a sense of where to focus our attention and where we think we would really see that higher level of use and it's really good news. We would see use. So the next analysis that we did was a crash analysis. We took five years of data and we analyzed it in a couple of different ways. So one thing that we looked at was overall just for all kinds of automobile crashes, all kinds of crashes that are out there on the road that are reported. And in that five-year period, there were actually 211 severe and fatal crashes. That's all modes. That's, you know, quite, it's a lot. Of those 28 severe and fatal crashes were people who were walking or who were biking. So about a third of all pedestrian or bicycle crashes were actually severe or fatal crashes. We also looked at this, like, where is this happening? Where are these hotspots that, you know, if we address an issue here or there, can we resolve some of these issues? And we do, definitely did see some hotspots. Some of these have actually had some improvements that have taken place since this data. So if you're looking at the map and you're looking at that big yellow spot you see in Rio Grande, Navarro. So those are where we're seeing a lot of these crashes taking place. Pedestrian crashes seem to happen more frequently at night in dark conditions, but they weren't necessarily at intersections. Bike crashes, they did actually tend to happen during the day and were at intersections.
Pardon me, do you have a number of the pedestrian and bicycle crashes? So you have 211 severe and fatal crashes total.
That's all crashes.
Correct, so doing, can you parcel out how many pedestrian crashes? You say one-third were serious or fatal, but is that, is there a number associated with pedestrian? A number with bicycle so that we know how many of that category actually occur within our city limits?
About 85.
Pardon?
About 85.
Okay.
So this other analysis that we did here, this one actually looks at the characteristics of the roads themselves and tells us whether we think that facility, how a person would feel if they were using it to bike along. And so this is, you're actually just looking at what the road is like. Doesn't have anything to do with who lives nearby or what destinations are along it. It's just like, how many cars are on this road? How wide is it? How many lanes? How fast? The main thing is how fast cars are moving. If we get ones and twos, these are pretty comfortable, actually, and we usually see those on neighborhood streets. We would see a lot of green. And then your oranges and your, that darker red color would be streets that are a little bit more high-stress. They're not easy to bike along. Those dark reds, only the most expert bicyclists are really comfortable on those. So one thing that was a little bit surprising to us, and so just, you know, put this in the back of your minds as you go through your other, you know, other agenda items and everything. Because of the higher posted speed limits in Victoria, nearly all of the roads scored a three or a four. So they were all pretty high-stress. Now, that's not to say that I think you should go out tomorrow and just lower your speed limit, but it is, it is an interesting factor that we came across in here is that the higher speeds really did make it not, an analysis that we hadn't seen a result like this before, that we didn't have any lower-stress ones. So I do want to talk.
I have a question. Was speed limit the only factor?
No, but it drove the results.
Okay.
It's the one, it's the factor that drove everything over. So we tried it again with lower speed limits and we were seeing, like a lot of neighborhood streets, where they would have scored lower on this analysis. So typically, when we do this analysis, we do it because we're like, all right, let's look and see where it's already easy, like what roads are already easy to look at. And we really didn't get that result. So we can, we can reach a different conclusion though, which is, let's take a look here and see, is the speed limit too high? Or does lowering the speed limit need to come with other improvements that would actually calm traffic and make people go slower because it feels like they should go slower?
Is Victoria, is Victoria unique in this aspect of speed? Or is it all Texas towns? Or a lot of Texas towns?
So this is an experience, I hadn't seen it before, drive, like come out just like that. So, yeah, I think, is it 35 on local streets? 35, 30?
It's 30 in neighborhoods.
Neighborhood, 30.
You can, yeah. Yeah. So, you know, and it's based on the GIS data that the city has so there could be some, there could be some roads that it's not, it doesn't have the exact correct number on it. That's just what's posted. So the reason I want to talk about speed is because it's so closely tied to the severity of injuries. This goes for people in cars and it really goes for people who are on foot. So, you know, if a person's hit at 20 miles an hour, so a person who's walking is hit at 20 miles an hour, they have a 90% survival rate of that crash. So only 10% of those crashes at 20 miles an hour, the pedestrian is hit, would result in a fatality. At 30 miles an hour, 60% is the survival rate and 40% would result in a fatality. And then at 40 miles an hour, only 20% is the survival rate and 80% of those fatalities, those crashes would result in a fatality. So you can see, it's, you know, only a five mile an hour difference and really has some really different outcomes. So again, so this is kind of the background. These are some of the different analyses we use that we couple with our public engagement. So we've talked to people from your community, a couple of different ways. We had a steering committee we've met with three times. Show a couple of slides about that in a second. We met with stakeholders, talk about that. And then we had some online public engagement as well. So the, a couple of pictures here from our steering committee meetings back in May. We went through our existing conditions analysis and then we asked folks on the steering committee to help us understand your network. Where is it easy to walk? Where is it easy to bike? Where is it hard to do so? Where do you feel safe? Where do you feel unsafe? What connections would you like to see? And then we also did a walking audit so we could actually go out and experience things together and see, you know, how does it feel to try and cross this road? What is working for us here? What would you suggest or what would make you feel more comfortable and safe? Got together with stakeholders too back in May. VISD, VCAM, the County Health Department, Trinity. Invited some folks to come and tell us about their experience or their constituents' experience and help us with those same kind of analyses. Where are people trying to get? Where are they trying to cross that they're having problems? And get that feedback from them. So we had some exercises where we had them draw maps for us. We also had a similar activity that was available to people online. I don't know if any of you participated in it and drew out any routes or locations where you might have felt safe or didn't feel as safe. There was an online survey and we got really good participation. We got 528 responses. We were, you know, when we set a target in the beginning, we thought we'd be doing really good if we got 400 and we surpassed that. So we thought that was really fantastic. I have to thank Maggie who did an awesome job getting the word out, putting signs up, signs up at bus stops, actually surveying people on transit. We all put it out, put the word out on social media accounts. There were press releases. So we really got some really good participation and feedback. So I'll tell you a little bit about what people said. How often do you bike or walk was one of the questions. If you add up the every days, two or more times a week and about once a week, people are, about 85% of everyone is walking or biking every week. The primary reason for walking and biking overwhelmingly was for health. So there were some other responses, reducing air pollution, saving money, reducing fuel consumption and some other lower ones too. But by and large, people, their major reason for doing it was for their health. If you don't bike in the region, why not? Well, it's for safety concerns where traffic, traffic volume and speed, a lack of trails, very much focused on the infrastructure. If you do, what are the biggest barriers? So gaps in sidewalks, no sidewalks where I want to go, sidewalk conditions, traffic volumes and speeds along the roadways. So again, very focused on the infrastructure. Much lower down, we saw the things like distance. It's too far to get to where I want to go or it's too hot here, you know, because we do have, get answers like that as well. For the bike facilities desired, it's kind of all, you know, there wasn't any one winner. You know, very similar answers for, a lot of people wanted bike lanes and a lot of people wanted off-street trails. But one was not, you know, overwhelming the other greatly. Bike lanes, separated and buffered bike lanes. And this was an answer, you could, you could answer as many times as you wanted to. So separated and buffered bike lanes was another big one. Designated routes, hey, even shoulders, but that's a bit lower down. Pedestrian facilities, overwhelmingly sidewalks. And that's, you know, that's kind of to be expected. Off-street trails also are very desirable for people. So that's a bit about what we heard from the public. So we have taken that public input, the maps you saw online as well as our steering committee, the analyses that we perform on our own and we develop a draft network. Each of these facilities are paired with a facility type that we believe can make it safer to walk or to bike. We do off-street trails, on-street facilities, sidewalks where there are gaps and then intersection improvements, other categories of recommendations. And we are still accepting feedback from our steering committee for another couple of weeks or another week or so as we get ready to finalize that network. So what's going to come next? Well, I buried the lead, we're going to finalize the network. So we're going to finalize that network. We are going to finalize our cost estimates, our facility type cost estimates and then for projects. We're going to develop a funding resources section so we can help kind of identify what potential funding sources are out there in addition to local funding sources. We'll draft the plan. That will come before you for review and then we will ultimately finalize the plan documents. So the schedule, it really hasn't changed very much over the course of the project timeline. So as you can see, we're getting towards that tail end with some engagement. Let's see, here we are, you know, presentation in September and then we'll be working on that final draft document. And that is all I have for my presentation. I thank you for your time today and I welcome your questions and input.
Can you, I don't know if this question's for you or for Julie or Maggie, but can you all remind us sort of how we ended up going through this process? Because I think it's important that, you know, we be reminded of why we even looked at doing a plan like this, right?
Sure. So there's two big reasons why we pursued this plan. The smaller of the two reasons is there is some grant funding options out there that look for you to have a plan. If you have a plan, you're either, you're only eligible if you have a plan or you score a lot higher if you have a plan. The other component is, you know, we will be kicking off our metro, the MPO will be kicking off the Metropolitan Transportation Planning Effort that we do every five years this fall. And federal regulations are requiring us to look more at not just roads, at the entire transportation network. And so that plan will incorporate this plan so that it's, you know, it'll roll into one and not have to be such a robust section in our MTP because we have just finished this Active Transportation Master Plan. So we will comply with those federal regulations on that MTP component.
Okay, thank you.
To maybe follow that a little bit further, this is a project through the MPO. We do have a steering committee. You saw some of the members and I'm one of them that's on the committee. And so it's been really eye-opening and I just want to kind of suggest, you know, at first I thought, okay, this is just for, you know, better biking, which is certainly important. But in the, in one of the field exercises that we did, we walked on Rio Grande from William Street over to Navarro and it's horrifying with the lack of sidewalks. And then we stopped again at the corner of Laurent and Rio Grande and tried to cross the street. And we really appreciated the fact that there was the pedestrian crosswalk and you're now seeing more of the pedestrian, I don't know what they're called, signals that, you know, count down. And so just go to one of our larger streets and try walking around a little bit and you really do understand that the gaps in the sidewalks are significant. I also want to segue though into a question for you and I apologize if you're not prepared and I've got my notes. But from our last meeting, you talked about different types of bicycle lanes and I know we've seen them all, but I had no idea there were that many and I don't know if you can do it easily or if you want my copies of. There's a difference between a side path and a shared path. There's a difference between a bicycle lane, a protected bicycle lane and it was really interesting. Can you go into that?
Yeah, I don't, I thought it was going to be too much for today for us to go through all of it because it really is a lot. But there is a lot of, there's a lot of design guidance that goes into it and the selection process of what is appropriate where is very important. We would never recommend a facility type that we didn't think was safe. So we are very careful about pairing the right facility type with the right facility. You know, and we've just been debating kind of recently about sidewalks versus side paths and it really does, there are a number of factors that you really do, for the user, it might feel kind of the same, but we really want to try and make the facilities as safe as we can. So the recommendations that we made are a combination of things. So we have the off-street facilities, which are going to be the shared paths and the side paths. They're similar in that they're for all kinds of users. So people who are walking or biking or using mobility aids. A side path goes next to the road and so those are great because we already have the right of way in a lot of cases. But they do require a little more design than a sidewalk does because if people are going on a bike, they're a lot faster and they need fewer driveways or definitely some additional sightlines and things like that. There are, you know, there are a variety of things that you could do on the street network and the good news is actually you do have some roads that have some excess capacity. So it is an option if, when looked at on an individual project by project basis, to actually use some of that excess capacity and put up a bike lane or put on a buffered bike lane. And then there are other facilities that are also on-street but belong on more like lower-volume roads or neighborhood streets. You might have some that people complain are a cut-through street so they want stop signs or speed bumps. Well, there are some other options available for traffic calming that could make it an attractive and safe place for people to bike in their neighborhood because we want them to get, if they want to go bike on that trail, on Lone Tree, Lone Creek, Lone Tree Creek Trail, we have to get them there. So there are some options for traffic calming that could make it a safe route to get to that trail. And then, of course, there's the variety of things in our arsenal for just walking facility improvements. So those are your sidewalks, but also your intersection improvements, your pedestrian signalization, whether it be at the intersection, which is what we're seeing all along Rio Grande, which was great. You know, all of those signals going up and the higher visibility crosswalks. I think we saw some spots medianed so people have a little spot to rest in the middle of the road if they can't make it all the way across. So those are some examples of the kinds of facility types that are paired and those are the different color codes on the map as well. Sorry, that was a very long answer.
Are there any other questions?
I just had one question. It looks to me like from the folks that answered the survey that the primary reason people are walking is for exercise. I mean, that 100% seems to be it. Given that, how did that impact the recommendations on, that we see on the draft? How did that play in, exercise versus primary mode of transportation?
Sure, sure. It's a really good question. Honestly, not that much because of the thing I just pointed out there, which is you still have to get to where you want to go for exercise from your neighborhood. So it's a combination of both things. So it's looking at transportation-based trips, but also, or. So it's looking at transportation-based trips, but also, or, you know, so people who are walking to go to school, well, walking to go to school, typically, you're leaving your same destination, your home in both cases. So they do play off of each other, but the end results here in Victoria didn't really, didn't really change on all that much as a result. We try and have a, a network, some options for people regardless of like their age or their ability. There should be some option for them to get where they're trying to get to.
Okay. Thank you.
Speaking of schools, around schools, is there a requirement that VISC puts in sidewalks around their own facilities?
So, no, they, they're treated just like any other development would be treated. You know, of course, all their schools are existing, and so it would, they'd have to trigger, it'd be some kind of trigger of a site plan or something to require the sidewalk. I mean, if they were going to, for example, tear down Strowman, if they were to receive a bond, tear down Strowman and rebuild it, then yes, they would be required to put in sidewalks at that point. But the existing schools, as long as there's no development trigger, they would not be required to put in sidewalks.
Even, even with the newer high schools and newer Cade and Shalimer, those are old enough that they didn't fit within the sidewalk ordinances?
No, I believe, I believe the council at that time gave them exceptions.
Okay. Thank you. One observation that I for sure wanted to make was simply just, one of my, I guess, key objectives from going through this exercise, of course, is facilitate, you know, pursuing grants, right? I mean, obviously, you know, we all love those opportunities, but more than anything is just education, right? Because there's a whole, there's a science, you know, behind how you create a community that is more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly, right? Oftentimes, people might not, or assume that it's only this, and it's only just putting up a sign, or it's only that, but there's so many different elements to it. And so I hope that this process begins a continuation or a continual effort for us to simply just become more educated, educate the community on what that means, so that when there are conversations, whether they be, you know, around speed limits in neighborhoods, we have a better understanding of the implications of it, that it's not just about lowering the speed limit, right? It contributes to a holistic, you know, quality-of-life element. And so that, I think, at the end of the day is, is one big objective, and I hope that, again, that you all find this educational, so that as we continue conversations around just transportation needs as a whole, we can take that into account.
Very good. All right, so we're moving on.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move right along if that's okay, Mayor Pro-Tim?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that.
All right, so I'll turn it over back.
I'll do my best Bach night and say, let's get this going.
All right, you got your timer going?
There we go, it's on.
All right. So I'm going to turn it over to Julie again and introduce our consultant to provide an update on the Unified Development Ordinance.
Okay, we're finally nearing the home stretch on our Unified Development Ordinance. So this presentation's going to be quite different than the one you just heard, and it's, we have a lot of questions for council. So Chance Sparks with our consultants, Fries and Nichols, going to give a kind of a very, very quick overview, and then end it with some very quick, brief next steps. But the bulk of it is we have some questions for council, so we hope you're prepared. Chance?
All right, thank you. Happy to be here again, visiting with y'all, and she's exactly right, we are heading towards the, the home stretch on this. So kind of give you a quick setting of where we are. We're currently orienting your steering committee to a full draft of this document. It's a working draft. From there, we'll be moving towards the public review draft probably by the end of this month, but we're looking for two big things from y'all today, which is some policy direction regarding parkland dedication and also historic preservation. These are key policy items where it lands in your court to decide how far do you want to go and how. And then we'll be moving towards a hearing and adoption schedule. We're working on getting that scheduled, trying to anticipate any of your meeting cancellation dates that sometimes happen during the holidays, and things like that to make sure we hit these things correctly, make sure you hit your correct notices for this as well. So here's where we are. Remember, we started with a diagnostic report. That's where we kind of went through all of your code and said, here's what's working, here's what's not, here's what needs to be fixed, with some engagement with stakeholders and things like that. From there, we stepped into drafting code modules. This is taking chunks of your code and doing it in some digestible pieces with a cyclical review with city staff. There's two really key elements to doing this drafting in Victoria that's unique. One is zoning avoidance. Most cities have zoning, which means the natural thing to reach for when you're trying to solve an issue, you reach for zoning. Here, you have to reach for something else and find a different way to accomplish the same thing. So that's one key element. The other key element, though, is what we have called breadcrumbing. And this is looking at, because so many other cities have zoning, developers from those places come here and they're looking for things, and they will not find them here because you don't have zoning. So we're trying to structure this where it becomes very obvious to the, to the novice developer for Victoria of what applies and how it applies, and they kind of have that realization of, oh, this is simpler than I expected. So we're trying to make sure it lines up in that way. We're, so we're working through that preliminary draft committee right now, public review. Open house is probably kind of the next big splashy thing, looking towards kind of October timeframe. And then we'll step into the adoption process from there, where you'll go through, you'll have hearings, adoption, there's anything that you change from the DIES and as adopted version, and you have a new code as a result. So first big topic is parkland dedication. Just to kind of give you a setting for this, parkland dedication is a very common development requirement in cities in Texas, particularly fast-growing cities. Almost all of them do it, but most cities now have adopted something like this. What you'll typically see is cities that have ratios that are around one acre per 50 units or a prorated portion. Sometimes it's a little more depending on the city. For example, Flower Mound up in Dallas-Fort Worth, they are known for open space. They have a much higher standard for this, but most float around this 1 to 50. There's usually a separate parkland development requirement, because there's dedicating the land, and then there's the what you do with it conversation that comes after, and how is that funded? And, and then you also see fee and lieu options, because some developments are in places where you say, yes, we really want to see parkland dedicated in this place. Some, you would say no, because maybe there's already a large park that is nearby. You don't want to duplicate. You'd actually be more interested in making that existing park a little better. So you have fee and lieu systems to address that, that type of approach. You know, cities vary in how they apply these. Usually applies to residential. Some cities step in and require it for lodging. That's rare, but it's something that is done. And then, and then you have different kind of parameters put on this. Cities establish their parkland dedication, parkland development fees, and their budget through their fee schedule each year. You have to back it with some study. You can't just kind of pick a number from the sky. Most cities for dedication, they rely on market value and do a market value assessment. For parkland development, you have a presumed program, and you do a cost estimate based on that and calculate that on a per-acre basis. So tend to be very defensible. You'll see minimum size standards for parks. Some cities are really excited to get the small one-acre parks. Others say, no, we want some, we want fewer but larger, and they'll set a five acre minimum. That usually goes back to cost of operation and maintenance, things like that. You'll see standards for what is acceptable parkland, and then you'll also see a process where if you have a new neighborhood and they have HOA parks, for whether a city will consider that as credit, and if so, how much in credit. So that's kind of your lay of the land on this topic. What we have placed in your draft ordinance right now is a one-and-a-half acre per 100 units, and it's assessed at your site plan or preliminary plat stage. This is based off of what we saw in your Parks Recreation Open Space Plan. This is where the origin of our talk of parkland dedication starts, is a plan that says, this is a good idea, you need to pursue this. So we've established what it's due at preliminary plat or, or at site plan, depending on the type of project. We have a minimum park size right now of one acre. That's one of the questions that we'll have for you, is, is one acre the right number, or do y'all want to go up to a higher number? And then a provision that says city council can reject public dedication in favor of fee and lieu for, or also accept HOA parkland as an equivalency. Generally speaking, multifamily projects almost always pay a fee and lieu. They don't dedicate the land, they don't build the improvements of a public park. That's because in their case, it is much more productive for them to maximize use of the land. They'll pay that fee and go on down the road. Very common practice. And, and usually, they're not necessarily in locations where you want that big new park anyway. For the standards that we've laid out, again, the minimum one acre, 200 feet of street frontage, that's a pretty standard requirement. Make sure it is, is accessible, minimum width of 50 feet. Basically, you don't want to end up with a very long skinny park that you can't do anything with. Have it centrally located, well-located, which is a bit more of a subjective standard, but to make sure you've got good accessibility to these, to these properties. In other words, it's not just something tucked off in the corner that nobody can get to, that it should be well-drained. There is benefit to having floodplain as dedicated parkland. You don't want all of your parks to be that way. I think this is something y'all are very familiar with because of Riverside Park, and where you have to like close Grover's and things like that. So the, we do have standards for, you have standards for, you know, what condition does it need to be in a transfer? Make sure you're not inheriting a piece of property that has underground storage tanks. That's a bad feeling. Addressing carbon gutter, and making sure you've got utilities in place, things like that. Basically, where it is ready to be developed is kind of the idea here. You do have a fee and lieu program set up within this right now. It is what, exactly what I described. It's tied to market value. You would set this with your fee schedule each year, and it's a reserve fund. It can accrue over time. You do need to expend those within eight years. This is based on some case law from where you had cities that would basically just pile up their park reserve fund and then not do anything with it. And you can't just do that. You have to actually make the improvements, make the investment. Fee and lieu improvements is much the same way. Some cities prefer to require a, a fee and lieu for parkland improvement rather than requiring the improvements themselves, because they want certain brands for their equipment, for easier maintenance, certain quality standards, and to make sure they're hitting any gaps in missing, missing program elements that people have asked for in your plan. So that's how we've got this structured right now. So the natural question is, what could that fee and lieu be? So the first thing I'll point to is that box in the upper right, because we are not saying to do this fee. This is your theoretical maximum, based on data that we could find easily from your Parks Plan and things like that. It's a big number. We would make a lot of enemies if we went down this path. So we're not recommending this, but giving you an idea of what it could look, of how this calculation is done. We look at, in y'all's case, the, the number of acres that's recommended within your Parks Recreation Open Space Plan, and then we use the, the program for the capital projects in that same plan for Riverside Park, Ethel Lee Tracy, and MLK Park. So really good data that we're able to apply into a code framework. So our recommendation, let's stick with that market value assessment. We haven't actually checked that. There's a process that was just approved in state law that applies to bigger cities for how you source your market value. We may take a look and have y'all apply that. It uses CAD data versus having to do an appraisal, a little bit easier. The, the second piece to this that we would suggest is, don't go full-fledged on, on what you, your fee could be, because if you're getting a new park, it doesn't just benefit those new residents. Other existing residents are likely to go and visit and use the park, so there's a, a citywide benefit to that, too. So that's the other reason we say, don't, don't go with your maximum fee. What we tend to do is follow Chapter 395 of Local Government Code. That's the impact fee statutes, mainly because it has a process that's defensible, well-defined, been the court many, many times, very reliable. Same thing with improvements, requiring those with dedication. We recommend setting this based on the value of those three parks out of your Parks Recreation Open Space Plan. You could also, you know, just have a hypothetical engineer's probable cost estimate prepared if you want to just come up with like what you want to use for your standard program. Again, same thing, consider not doing the full recovery on this. So let's say you go with 50%. What does this look like? You start looking at a fee that is more like a, you know, a combined fee and lieu of, call it roughly 1,000 per unit. That is pretty reasonable when you look at what other cities charge. Some cities charge as high as 2,200 to 2,300 on this, depending on where you are. This is y'all's first steps into this. Where you set this fee is inherently a policy choice. Our role is to say, here are your maximums, here's what, here's as far as we think you should go, and then it's on y'all to decide, how far do we actually want to go? So this is kind of what we've lined out for y'all on, on the fee, on the fee and lieu. When your Unified Development Ordinance is adopted, you would choose to amend your fee schedule at that time if you want to, or you could wait. Some things, some things what we see cities do when they step into parkland is they'll adopt the code, they'll get it in place, and then they'll wait probably, you know, six to eight months before they step in and say, okay, we're going to start applying this for this particular parkland standard. That's just getting people used to the idea, giving y'all time to have the conversations about where to set it, so you don't have that pressure cooker piece to it. So our four big questions for y'all on parkland. Are you ready to establish parkland dedication requirements? You kind of said you were in the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan. This is now, oh, we're going to do it. So this is asking y'all, are, are you sure, are you ready to step this direction? Do you have any preferences on fee and lieu, any preference on park dedication size, and how do you feel about HOA parks as getting credit? So that's kind of our feedback that we're seeking today, so we can round out this piece of policy within the code.
Just for some additional context, because a real-life example for us would of course be looking at Ethel Lee Tracy Park, because we obviously are seeing residential growth on the northern side of town. And so part of this is, you know, we're seeing some residential developments with some type of, you know, park space already by default, so like Terra Vista, for example, they have a very small, you know, playground space already. But if we pursue a fee and lieu of, right, to generate some revenue in essence, Ethel Lee Tracy Park would be the nearest park, public existing park on the north side. And so I want to remind you that, and I'm sorry I didn't think of putting up the image out there, but hopefully you recall that the Parks Master Plan did call for some improvements to Ethel Lee Tracy Park. And I did just pull up the cost of that, and back in 2021 when that plan was adopted, the estimated cost to make those improvements to Ethel Lee Tracy Park was $5 million. And so if we were to pursue doing something at Ethel Lee Tracy Park consistent with what's there now, obviously that figure will probably go up a little bit, right, because of inflation? And so I just ask that you keep in mind that, you know, this fee and lieu of mechanism could serve as a source of revenue to make some of these improvements that you've already seen, and that we've already to some extent talked about as part of the Parks Master Plan. And that, I think, is a real-life likely scenario for us, simply considering that the bulk of our residential development is on that side of town.
It's a lot to throw at somebody.
You mean right now?
Yeah, even right now.
Yeah. So I, anyway, are you waiting for comments?
I am, ready for comments.
Okay.
So one question on the, on the fee and lieu, kind of following what you said, Mr. Gerser, from the standpoint that, that money that's paid in, is the concept that it would be used for parks that support that new neighborhood, or could it be used for parks anywhere within the city?
The first.
The first, okay.
Yeah. We would have to be able to connect the dots between how that money generated in that neighborhood directly benefits that neighborhood.
Okay.
When you were talking about Terra Vista just a second ago, when you said that they have a small park.
Right.
Would they get a small credit in regards to having a smaller park and then taking the rest of that and applying that, or is it just going to be?
That's question number four there.
Yeah, well, that's.
What, what do you want it to be?
I mean, that's an option.
Yeah, no, that's.
Yeah, I mean, that's an option.
Open for conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah. But keep in mind that typically these, like in Terra Vista's case, at least theoretically, you know, that park is you know, that park is only open to Terra Vista residents, right? So while you might have additional neighborhoods get built nearby it, they, at least in theory, wouldn't necessarily be able to access that.
That's where that hundred percent of the park credit, you know, some of that's going to be tied to what we want to establish as a minimum park size. You know, if we say our minimum park size should be, you know, five acres and then of course, kind of reduce down the dedication to kind of represent that. But they're doing a, you know, seven thousand square foot lot with a playground on it, that's not equal. So there's a lot of options between yes, they would get credit, to no, they won't. There's many variables we can go.
I have a question. Are we talking about new parks or existing parks? Are the existing parks going to be grandfathered? How is this going to work?
That's a great question. It really just depends on what our plan is. So for example, again, going back to our likely scenario on the north side, really the only city park on the north side, of course, is Ethel Lee Tracy Park, right? But that's, you know, on that side of, that's seventy-seven, right? But if we continue to see residential growth, say down Coral Highway, or even past Terra Vista, maybe at some point, maybe it would, you know, be appropriate to consider doing another actual city public park, maybe on that side of north side, right? Because if we do see an influx of new residential off of Novero, but then also off of Coral Highway, then at that point, it might make sense to consider adding a park off Coral Highway. So it just depends on how we grow and it depends on how we choose to prioritize that. Another option could be simply expanding Ethel Lee Tracy Park, right? Converting it into more of a regional, you know, park, right? To where theoretically it would be able to have the space to absorb that additional demand by having that many more people living on that side of town. So that's definitely would be our decision. In either case, we would have to document, this is what it costs to build a new park. This is what it costs to expand Ethel Lee Tracy Park. And this money that we would collect could go to either one, so long we could connect the dots between how it benefits that neighborhood.
Did I see correctly while I go on this, on the screen, that Ethel Lee has thirty acres?
Yes.
Okay, so is there room for expansion? Is that what you're saying for Ethel Lee? We can still expand it, or are we already using all thirty acres?
That park with the existing land that we own is fully developed. There is available property next to Ethel Lee Tracy Park off of Placillo Benavides that we could theoretically pursue to expand the park. The Parks Master Plan did call to expand it a little bit. If nothing else, simply to improve traffic flow, because right now it's only one entrance in and out. So the Parks Master Plan had suggested adding a few acres on the side to add another entrance or exit, add some more parking, simply just to help with traffic flow and add capacity for parking spaces so that we can better utilize like the amphitheater and other things. Because when we went through that process, the feedback that we received was that one of the reasons why that amphitheater isn't utilized as much as it probably can be, is because it's just hard to get, it's hard to get equipment to it, right? Like sound equipment or anything else. And it's hard to even have the parking to support something going on there. And so at minimum, the Parks Master Plan did suggest that. But it doesn't mean that we can't consider an expansion that actually expands amenities through additional acreage, right? So maybe it's adding, I'm going to make something up, you know, another playground, basketball, you know, more basketball courts or just open field for baseball, you know, whatever it is. That'd be up to us.
It's really a kind of a whole mental shift for us. We tend to look at development as what can we do within the boundaries of this property? And the whole concept of an impact fee is something that's been around for a long time, but Victoria has been hesitant about. And it's basically an income source that is not public funds for the fact that this development in its own little pocket is going to have an impact on surrounding areas, on our infrastructure. And so, I mean, when he said that it was in the impact fees section, that's because it is a concept that we are not used to because we don't really think about.
And this is also why when we.
All over the state.
And this is also why when we work with out-of-town developers, they're like, oh my God, this is the best thing since sliced bread, right? You don't have zoning, there are no impact fees, right? When we deal with local developers, right, they have a different opinion on our code and requirements and our fees. But experienced developers that develop in other places recognize that, you know, here with the lack of impact fees, you know, it's easier.
They're not just for parkland, they could be for drainage, for sewer, for water.
Correct.
All those things that we ask our taxpayers citywide to pay are impacted more in one area.
Many, many, many years ago, before I was on city council, I brought up impact fees. It didn't go over real well. I just would like some clarification. I'm a developer, I come into town, say this is in effect. Do I have the choice of dedicating land to thing or paying a fee?
Well, that's.
Or can I do half of one and half of the other? What are my choices?
So cities take it, approaches both ways. Some cities, they say that it is purely the city's discretion on the fee in lieu versus actual dedication. Some cities actually set the fee in lieu as the default. And then most cities allow some combination. So for example, you might have, you know, a few acres that are perfectly aligned with a targeted area where you wanted to acquire parkland anyway. You as a developer might say, yeah, let's go ahead and dedicate that piece, but it only satisfied half your obligation. And so you say, and then for the rest, I'd like to do a fee in lieu. And depending on how you structure this, it could be the city just like says, okay, that's your prerogative, we're good with that. Or it could be, you know, somebody says, well, we have to get that formally approved. It's, again, that's another up to y'all choice.
I would, and I think part of what, you know, another likely scenario for us to kind of try and make it, you know, feel realistic, is that if we ever did get to the point of, let's say, deciding that we want another public park on the north side off Coral Highway, we might decide it makes sense to find a piece of property that has access to the river, right? Well, in that scenario, you know, if somebody develops something, let's say, on, you know, the north side of Coral Highway, we'd probably be like, well, just pay a fee, right?
Correct.
But if somebody's developing a residential development on the south side of Coral Highway that happens to be close to the area where we all think it makes sense to have a park, then that's where we say, well, you know what, just dedicate, you know, dedicate the land to us. And so I understand that it might be challenging to, you know, consider these options in the absence of us knowing for sure what we're going to do. But I would, I would suggest that for now, we think of this as simply Ethel Lee Tracy Park. And because again, realistically, that's what's before us right now, right? Because regardless of whether we have a fee in lieu of or park dedication, we would probably take the smart business approach to suggest, well, before we start spending money on building a new park, we should probably first fix up the existing park that we have, right? And so in this scenario, I would simply suggest that rather than us getting lost on what-ifs, we simply, simply think, okay, this is an opportunity to generate some money to enhance Ethel Lee Tracy Park. And we either think it's a good idea or not, and either answer is okay. But I think that would be a good way to simply just look at it.
Yeah, I think the city has to have the option for what you've said. And then from the standpoint that, you know, I'd rather put money into what we have, make it better than have a bunch of little smaller parks that don't really serve the purpose we're really going for. That makes sense to me. So it seems to me that the fee in lieu should be the default with the option to accept some, you know, land donation at the city's discretion, you know, through some kind of arrangement with the developer. I mean, that makes all the sense in the world. In terms of just the establishment of parkland dedication requirements, I don't think anybody coming in, a developer from out of town, is going to be surprised that we have those. In fact, I think they're surprised that we don't. I think they're used to those. We don't have nearly as many development-type issue or fees and that sort of thing as we typically see. For the local developers, that's where, you know, we may need to have some conversations about, okay, what does this look like? What does this do? But folks coming in from out of town, I don't think they're going to, I don't think it's going to be a, it's not going to impact whether or not they come to Victoria, because I think they're expecting that before they ever start a development here. The other questions are, I mean, minimum park size, if they're saying an acre, seems fine with me. And from the standpoint of HOA park credit, I mean, I think we see that now somewhat. I know what Woodway has, you know, internal park and that sort of thing. You know, it makes sense to me that if they're going to develop that within, to fill that, that service, if you will, that the city's not providing, not providing, not having to maintain, not having to do that, that there could be some kind of credit associated with that. That makes sense to me.
And I would.
So I was just going down the list.
You kind of jumped in. I was going to say, from a timeliness standpoint and from an order standpoint, maybe we should hit all of these bullets in a row and go that way. Is everybody ready to establish parkland dedication requirements? Does everybody feel comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I think that that's unanimous from that standpoint. So with that being said, and we talk about the preference for fee in lieu, I certainly agree that I think that the fee in lieu should certainly be the default in there in accepting that. Just like what has been mentioned here prior. I do think that the city should have some control. We know where parks are missing based upon things. I don't want a developer just to put something up and say, here, we met our requirement when it doesn't meet the demands of our citizens and really going through the studies that show that we're missing. So anybody have any further comments in regards to the fee in lieu aspect of this?
And I think the discussion here has been helpful to me because at first I thought, it being the default didn't strike me as the logical solution, but I think it does make sense. It gives us the maximum, the maximum control over the decisions.
I have a quick follow-up question out of, so if we're good with having a dedication, our fee in lieu dedication requirement, is there a threshold that we want to start that at, being a five-lot subdivision? Or we want to collect it on every single plat, residential plat? So, you know, keep in mind, we do have a lot of those, like the GLO home plats. So that would trigger, and of course, we would be able to then use those funds to improve parks in those areas like MLK Park or Boulevard Park. So how broad do y'all want to go? Just apply it to everything, or do we want to tie it to a threshold? Five lot minimum, ten lot minimum?
I would say tie it to a development threshold. I wouldn't do it on every individual one. That seems, that seems a little over the top to me.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said, I would have some kind of threshold, ten lots or whatever, instead of applying it to every one. An individual development, you know, somebody developing their own homestead or whatever. I wouldn't be in favor of that.
Well, but the problem with that, then, a developer would develop ten things at a time.
Or they'll build nine. Pardon?
Well, I would rather do that than say, okay, Mr. Smith, you have to.
We can tie it to the preliminary plat because we waive preliminary plats on those, on the single lot. But we don't waive preliminary plats when it's a larger development, where there's extension of roads and water and sewer. So maybe we tie it to the preliminary plat.
Is that waived in any other cases, the preliminary?
Commercial, it's four or fewer lots, commercial, we waive it a lot. And then single lots, no. But on your, like Terra Vista's, your Woodway types, they're not ever waived in those situations.
Okay.
But wouldn't we want it on a commercial?
Thank you.
Do we?
I mean, that, doing it by individual lot, you know, Queen City area would be a perfect example. Because as these, as these lots, you know, that have, are just vacant lots, get developed and somebody, a private developer, right? Home builder builds a home, theoretically, you know, the little bit of money that he could collect could go back into Queen City Park, right? And if over the course of, I'm going to make up a number, you know, two or three-year span, you have, you know, ten, fifteen, you know, homes individually that get put in that neighborhood, you know, that could equate to, you know, an amenity that that money can pay for in that park. So there are pros, you know, and cons to that. I think, I think, Dwayne, your comment, I think, was centered more around like if I want to, you know, as a just private citizen, you know, develop a lot, then maybe in that scenario it won't apply. But we have legitimate residential developers that develop one lot at a time. And so, you know, I don't know how you distinguish, right? Because I get what you're suggesting, right? Like if I just buy a lot and I just going to build my house on it, it's different than if, you know, I'm not going to mention a company. No free advertising in this meeting.
What would the waiver process be? Would there be a waiver process?
That's something we can build into this, is you could build in a waiver process. You could set up just a low threshold, like that four-unit threshold is something that's very commonly used in other cities. There's a few ways to do it.
I like the individual lot. I just, I'd rather not invite all kinds of odd types of development because, you know, let's stay, let's stay under four lots or let's stay under two.
Are you saying for like individual homeowners?
Yes.
Oh, I'd be totally against that.
Well, and that's why I'm asking, that's why I'm asking for the waiver type of process. Because for the GLO homes, I agree, but I'm not sure we should.
Yeah, no, it makes, I mean, if the common, I guess, provision on this is that it typically applies to people that are developing for profit, not for their own homestead. I mean, I think that's where you make the distinction. It makes sense to me that we look at what's out there and say, okay, what works and what doesn't in terms of numbers and that sort of thing. But I would be absolutely against saying, you as an individual homeowner, just developing your own home would have to pay something on that. I have no chance.
But that's the example that Jesus gave us for Queen City.
Well, if it was an outside developer, then that's for a profit, then absolutely. But if I'm a homeowner in Queen City and I want to fix up my home, or I want to go in and develop a home and you want me to pay that, that's not, I think that's against what we're trying to do, to get people to come in and develop those areas.
And that's just why I see it with the waiver.
Why create another layer of bureaucracy?
Is there a way to put that in the ordinance?
Mostly because how are you going to word it?
Yeah, I think we've got enough that we can come up with something off of that. Minimum park dedication size, one acre or you want something larger?
What, what is normal for what you've seen?
Sorry, what?
What is normal for what you've seen? I mean, I, you know, get in there, MLK's three acres.
MLK is, I have the list, I was going to actually read it off.
Yeah, it's three acres. What's the smallest?
It's not actually. So MLK Park is one point seven acres.
How come that said three on there?
Yep.
That's what this document says.
But if we leave it to the option of the city, the city can decide what the side is.
Yeah, total acres, three.
That's why this is our decision for sure. I just thought it might be helpful for you to see, connect the real-life existing park with size. And according to our Parks Master Plan, you know, MLK Park is just shy of two acres. Queen City Park is two acres. Will Rogers Park is two acres. The only one that we have that is, or the couple that we have that are close to one acre would be Bronson Park, Meadow Lane Park. Boulevard Park is one point four acres according to this. So just to, I'm sorry? Okay. I don't know if you heard that, but she said that Woodway's internal park is three acres. But anyway, just to kind of give you a sense of that, Ethel Lee Tracy Park is thirty, somebody mentioned that already. Hopkins Park is eleven.
It should be option of the city.
I would say two.
Well, it should be the option, it might be some up to the city. Because it might be a time where you want a small park, might be you don't want a small park in that area. I mean, if we leave the option up to us, then it's.
Well, you're tying the fee to, you're tying the fee to a park size to help set that fee. So, you know, if it's a, if we do end up wanting to take that fee to go put towards a large park like an Ethel Lee Tracy, it's going to be multiple neighborhoods, not necessarily one neighborhood. Whereas if it's just one neighborhood. Whereas if it's just one neighborhood, we'll take that fee and just buy two acres in that neighborhood. So it's more about the size of our ideal, like, neighborhood park to tie to the fee. Whereas, yes, whenever we're actually developing the parks, that would be an individualized discussion on what our needs are at that time.
Exactly. Shouldn't the size of the park be determined about the developments? Or about the area that we're planning to see there? I mean, just to set a size for everyone.
Yeah.
That doesn't make sense at all.
That's the option of the city.
Yeah, but I think it's, like, if you put yourself in the shoe, and I'm sorry I'm jumping the gun here, but if you put yourself in the shoes of a developer, especially if you're gonna have a conversation about credit, then you really need to know what's the size.
Well, we can have a minimum and...
Right, and that's what we're trying to kind of figure out, right? Because I'm gonna make, y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, but the way that I understand this works is that, let's say it's five acres, and a residential developer wants to put in an acre. Okay, well, that's a credit for that. But if we make our minimum an acre and they put an acre, then we're not getting anything.
Right.
So it almost kind of seems like maybe the bigger minimum that we have, the more likely that we are to actually get a developer to choose the fee in lieu of, because it would be very difficult for them to fit, you know, a five-acre park space to dedicate to us in their development, right?
But is the developer the one that's choosing that? I thought we said the fee in lieu was the people.
I thought the city was choosing that.
Correct. But what I'm saying is that whatever we choose to make our minimum will drive whether a developer tries to make it fit in their site plan, or drives their decision to just say, you know what, that's too big, so I'm just gonna pay.
And how does this apply?
But it is our decision, for sure.
We've had developers come in and do developments, not a whole development, but I think Lake Forest comes to mind when there was ten homes.
The phases?
Yes. Yeah, the multiple phases, they go over years. And how, what would this look like based upon that type of development?
Like the, what I would call like a hyper incremental type of, like, it's like a master plan development, but super incremental. Typically, what you would see in that circumstance is, you know, their obligation per plat, you know, if it's ten units at, you know, this many acres per hundred, their obligation ends up being something, you know, kind of a really small amount, like two tenths of an acre. So they wouldn't reach the threshold of that minimum park size. That means they automatically go into the fee in lieu bucket. Now, if it was a 500-lot subdivision, and that would easily, you know, crest that one acre, two acre, probably even a three acre minimum, then that becomes a conversation of, okay, do we do the dedication? Or do we want the fee in lieu on that? And usually on a larger project, that's actually a very different conversation, because it may be large enough that it needs its own something there. So, but usually in those circumstances, you see that go to city discretion.
So we're still down to question three, preference on minimum park dedication size.
If you're wondering about the common number, we see anything from one to five, and everything in between.
Am I accurate, though, in that the larger the requirement, the more likely a developer is to choose the fee in lieu of?
Yes.
And to just keep that in mind.
But I thought they didn't get to choose. I thought it was up to us.
It's up to us on the size. It would be up to them to determine whether they want to actually fit that in, and then it'd be up to us to decide whether we want to accept it.
Yeah. So we still have the option to accept?
So they can still fit it into their plan, and we could still say, you know what, it does not jive with our overall Parks Master Plan, because we'd rather continue to just invest in Ethely Tracy Park, and then it transitions to the fee in lieu.
Okay. I understand that.
That fee's gonna be paid by the developer and then added to the cost of the house.
Oh, yeah.
I can't hear you.
I said that fee would be paid by the developer and added to the cost of the house.
Sure.
Yeah, more than, yeah, yeah. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, that's a pass-through.
Okay.
All impact fees would be passed through in any scenario.
So it would all be new construction?
Yes, yes.
Redevelopment, some redevelopment. I mean, if somebody takes over a neighborhood or something.
I mean, the only scenario that I can think of where this might apply in a redevelopment is if somebody goes in and wipes out, you know, an entire area and has to replat and re-site the whole thing from scratch.
Right, yeah, it's only moving forward, though.
Okay.
Right.
Well, if, I mean, a lot of our small parks are small, and you said that sounded like a lot of those were two acres. And it's a weird conversation we're having, because we're talking about how big we want a park to be, but at the same time, using that number to talk about improving a different one. So, I mean, we threw around the number two for a while, or I'm kind of inclined to say two or three.
I mean, whatever you feel comfortable, you know, defending, in essence, because ultimately, you know, somebody might come and challenge, or simply just ask, well, why is your minimum this? Right? And there's some, you know, logic to, well, if the majority of your neighborhood parks are around two to three, well, there's some logic around making that number consistent.
How many acres does one city block encompass? Couldn't you just say, well, we want one city block to be in the middle of the subdivision, or?
Well, no, because I mean, that's not, that's, people don't develop city blocks anymore.
And that's way less than an acre.
Well, a full city block downtown is probably two acres.
Oh, really?
Well, for example, for example, Delion Plaza is 1.8. So it's close to two acres.
Yeah.
Memorial Square is slightly smaller.
We can always change the number, right?
Yeah, yeah, a hundred percent, yeah.
And would we just make Delion Plaza bigger?
We need to have that for the fee in lieu. There's gotta be a money, monetary tied to an acre from our value.
If you're gonna put a swing set or a playground, I would recommend three.
Go by the microphone.
If you're gonna put a swing set or a playground, I would recommend three. Snacks good.
Three is fine, then. Three is fine.
I'm good with three.
That's fine.
Sure.
Three. Magic number.
When this HOA question is, do you want to have something in here that provides an HOA path? And do you want that to be full city discretion, or something that's automatic for credit?
I'm really struggling with that one. I'm thinking that it needs to be city discretion, and it's because you, a lot of these neighborhood parks are great, and I look at them and I say, oh, they'd be really neat to live there, so I could use that park, and don't really recognize that it's open to the public. And, but on the other side of it, if it's gonna be, you know, very large development, where a lot of people will be impacted by that park, I wouldn't be adverse to the credit.
So what a lot of cities do is they do go with a discretionary option.
Yeah.
To set a few guardrails for it, and that's what we can definitely put in here.
What do y'all think?
I think the concept of a credit makes sense from the standpoint that that becomes theirs and we don't have to pay to maintain it, and we don't have to replace stuff every twenty years, and we don't have to do the, you know, we're getting the benefit of parks without the expense of the park. And so a credit makes sense to me, from that standpoint.
Yeah.
I like the idea of a credit, but a hundred percent credit?
Yeah. Well, that's, I think that's where the discretionary part comes in. I don't know about a hundred percent, but...
I mean, should we, okay, do we need to talk about a percentage here, or just, you know, we're just gonna fly, each one has its own merits? And every council gets to discuss that? Do you want to put that on them?
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it. No, I see what you're saying.
I mean, I'm kind of struggling.
I wouldn't want somebody to do that to us.
I mean, the only option we've been throwing out is a hundred percent. What's the other option, and what are the pros and cons of the other options? I kind of feel like we're making a decision in a vacuum and don't really know all the information we need. Yeah, that's something we can use the steering committee to finish vetting this, too. Yeah, that makes sense. All right. Second big set of questions was about preservation. We know y'all have been talking a little bit about historic preservation.
I know.
And a big thing to start with here is that where you are today in historic preservation is not typical in most cities. Most cities, when they have a historic district, it's doing a whole bunch of things. It's requiring a design review and special teardown considerations with sometimes very public processes. Y'all's historic district primarily functions to adjust a few standards and prohibit manufactured homes. There's no design review element to it. So when we look at this, and we've kept this in your current draft, you know, that you have now, but what y'all have been doing with those historic districts is actually a lot more like what we call neighborhood conservation districts. Basically, they're historic district-like, very common in some other cities. San Antonio is a super user on these. And so we've included your current historic overlays, but we've also added this neighborhood conservation overlay for any future stuff that y'all are considering like that. Gives you a very clear path and better defines what can be altered with these. Mainly give you a few more tools in the toolbox along the way. So that's what we kind of have in here now. But we also know that there's a bigger conversation out there about going further into the preservation conversation. The place I always start this now is in state law. So, sorry, it's a very boring topic, but it's important. Apologies to the city attorney. So about four, I think it was six years ago, they had a state law change that defined the process for declaring historic districts. The big theme to this is that it either has to be fully owner consented, meaning the owner is on board, they say, yes, let's go do this. And if it's not, it requires a three-quarter vote, a supermajority vote of both your city council and a commission that's assigned, if any. So in y'all's case, it would probably be your planning commission. And there are certain things that are exempt. Religious institutions are exempted from this. That comes from the old City of Bernie case. And there's a very specific notice that's required with very specific content if you're proposing to establish a new district or a landmark. And you have to allow that owner to withdraw any time. What this effectively does is it makes creating a new historic district incredibly difficult, because you're asking people to sign up, usually for additional regulation. Most people don't voluntarily sign up for that, unless you've got something else that's coming with that in the form of tax incentives, abatements, that kind of thing. So that's something to keep in mind, that that's your regulatory space you're working in. Cities that do take the step into what we call a design review approach to historic preservation, there's two different paths. There's doing it by landmark, which is individual properties, and then there's doing it by districts, larger areas. What I've listed out here is an example of what you usually see as the criteria. I typically see six criteria for a landmark, and you have to satisfy at least two of them. And it's really dealing with, what's the significance of it? What's it associated with? Is it something that is unique, that is a great demonstration of that particular architecture or something like that? Or it's a very familiar visual? Those are your, kind of what you think about in the landmarking process. Short version, usually if you're designated a landmark, it is oftentimes eligible for the National Register. So that's something to keep in mind. Districts have to contain a variety of properties that all meet this, that work cohesively together. So usually, like, your downtown is a great example of that. The, and they have to be, you know, as distinct section. A big thing with this approach is you really benefit from having an updated Historic Resources Survey. This is the big document that tells you, here's all the historic properties in this geographic area. This is the degree to which they are intact. They are still, have their historic integrity. And usually, there's a preservation priority rating. How important are they to keep? Usually, cities use that to look at, is there enough concentration to declare a district? And they also use that for, should we pursue a landmark designation on any of these? So that's something to keep in mind. If you don't have that updated, you'll want to get that updated. That also provides you a really good route for when you're dealing with demolitions and you get somebody that is screaming and yelling because they have a fifty-year-old shed that has no historic value whatsoever, and they have to wait sixty days to tear it down. This provides you a path to avoid that, because you could say that if it's a non-contributing structure, no stay of demolition, proceed. So that's something to keep in mind with this. So this is what you usually see for criteria. The processes that you see happen with this is what we call a certificate of appropriateness. Basically, it means if you're making exterior alterations, you have to get it specially approved. Cities take two routes with this, and sometimes a blend of both. Sometimes they'll establish a historic preservation commission or historic design review commission. And it's a public body, just like your planning commission. Their job is to review and approve or deny these things with the recommendation of a historic preservation officer. The other route is an administrative route, where the historic preservation officer is empowered to make the decisions, and then there's an appeal process. And that appeal, usually in that circumstance, would go to either a planning commission or directly to city council. Both are perfectly valid. I tend to favor that administrative process. You look like you have a question, maybe?
No, I was just gonna comment, or it's a hybrid.
So a hybrid would be, in certain circumstances, the preservation officer can approve, and going down the road, and there's usually kind of a, here's your guardrails for what that person can do. And then here's the threshold for when it crosses over and has to be approved or considered by a historic preservation commission.
Right. So a real-life example might be something like, you know, if you're gonna paint the exterior of your house, the preservation officer might just have the authority to just, you know, sign the paper. But if you're gonna replace the windows in the house, or something like that, then that might trigger going to the board, because that's more architectural, it's, you know, then there's questions around, you know, the look of the house. In Kingsville, we had a hybrid system, and the most common item that would go in front of the board would be when somebody would want to update the siding. So something, you know, like going to a hard plant, is that what it's called? Yeah. You know, that would go in front of the board, because they were actually changing a material, which is a substantial change, you know, to a structure.
I definitely like the hybrid much better.
Yeah, and you also usually have, like, ordinary maintenance, certain things that are just exempt. I highly recommend having paint as an exempt activity, mainly because that is where I see preservation commissions get in trouble. There is a commission where I live that, when I was in college, got in trouble, because they spent an hour arguing over a shade of white. I am not making that up. So that's something to keep in mind. So usually where you see paint come into it is if it's a masonry building and it has not been painted before, then you want that to have a special approval, because once you paint masonry, you pretty much can't go back. You're committed. And so you have to have a good reason for doing it, things like that. So usually have an ordinary maintenance provision, being able to replace same with same. You know, if it's got a, you know, a standing seam metal roof with this profile, and they're replacing it with that same thing, bless you, go on, and go on down the road. And then a lot of them use that hybrid approach, like what he described for Kingsville. I worked in Muta, we used a hybrid approach. There's also demolition provisions. So there's usually a provision for what happens if it's hazardous or dangerous, where your building official raises their hand and says, hey, this thing is a public health hazard, you know, big problem. And that has a process where the preservation officer is notified. If you have a commission, the HPO would then notify the commission. Doesn't stop it, but it does, you know, just put them on notice that this happened. And then if you have a demolition by neglect provision, you can actually trigger it through that process. The second part of this is, you have someone that just wants to tear something down, for whatever reason. And it's within, it's either within a district or it's a landmark. Usually, there's a sixty-day stay. You already have that in place. And it has to meet a certain set of standards for whether it can be torn down. The most significant one of this is if they claim economic hardship, it triggers a secondary process where they have to essentially try to unload that property if it is contributing. You do have standards of documentation submitted. Very common practice is if it's a contributing structure, they have to fully document it following the HABZ model for documenting historic properties. And then there's usually some limitations on what you can do after, after that demolition's been approved. You'll see restrictions put in place, things like that. The third demolition topic with this is demolition by neglect. This is where somebody has camped out on their property, they're not doing anything with it. If you're around... Um, if you're around for the downtown plan, one of the things I talk about is that a, that the biggest threat to any building is vacancy. Uh, because then that's when things fall apart and nobody knows. That's demolition by neglect, where you're not proactively addressing issues. Uh, and you can reach a point where the building starts to lose its historic integrity to the point that eventually has to be demolished. That's demolition by neglect. It's basically slow motion demolition. Uh, there is a procedure for that, it's very specified. Uh, this has been through court several times, and that's what's led to the refinement of it. Uh, uh, but it's a big public process, um, and they are difficult. They are difficult investigations. Uh, a lot of cities, especially smaller cities, if they have this provision, uh, establish an effective limit on how many investigations they'll do a year on these because they, they have a lot of lift to them, they require a lot of research, um, and are just not very pleasant. Uh, so that's, uh, kind of your, your three approaches to demolition with this. So kind of let's lean into the question that we have for y'all is, you have what you have now. Are you interested in going further and what would that look like? Um, so there's, you know, it could be, you know, establishing a landmark program where those are subject to a greater level of design review and go through a separate process. That's something that we see commonly for cities that are taking their first steps into this type of activity. You could look at adding review regulations to your existing historic districts. That's where I have the professional responsibility to raise a flag and warn you. Uh, because when people became part of these districts, they were probably told one story. If you change that story on them, they're likely to want to have a conversation with you about that, and it probably won't be real fun. So you want to think about if you're gonna go to that process, what type of engagement do you need to do for that? And that's where we would tell you, get this, the UDO adopted, and we would actually have a set, a preset amendment ready for you where you could plug and play it once you have those conversations. Uh, because we don't want y'all to feel rushed into that at all. Uh, the other question is, are you interested in a, in a certificate of appropriateness? Do you want that, that design review element? And then how do you feel about demolition by neglect? Do you want to try going down that path? Um, so those are kind of the big three questions for this. And then I'll be done, and that'll be good.
Julie, can you talk a little bit about, you know, yesterday when we met to talk about this, you, um, about our code enforcement? And how our code enforcement is just super engaged, um, with some of these elements? Because I think that's important.
I think it'd be helpful to start with some background. So some fun facts to know and tell about me is that my first, the first decade of my career, I was historic preservation officer for San Angelo and Bryan, and then of course went over to Brenham, which is also a very preservation-minded community. So I was the liaison to historic preservation commissions and, and did the design review. So I have a lot of background in this. And I will tell you exactly what Chance told you. Demolition by neglect is impossible. In fact, the only time I've ever served as an expert witness was on a demolition by neglect case, which we did win, but it was, uh, like, four-year-long battle to win. Um, so what we do here, and why I'm not sure that demolition by neglect, although we do have a lot of demolition by neglect in Victoria. I think you can drive around and see the effects of demolition by neglect in our community and how much that has improved since Hurricane Harvey. And the reason it has improved so drastically is because code enforcement, because we also have adopted property maintenance codes. And code enforcement has been very proactive on enforcing property maintenance codes. So if we continue to have, um, a robust code enforcement department that goes and, and does property maintenance, especially if we focus, um, property maintenance on historic areas of our town, um, and enforcing those codes, then you almost don't need to get to the demolition by neglect because again, the demolition by neglect, you have to document it from the point when it's not neglected or it's not in a bad state of repair. And continue to document it until it's falling down. And you don't really know that it's going to start being neglected at that, at that front end. So that's why those cases are really so hard, um, to really enforce and why the property maintenance, uh, code and process that we currently use, I feel is a much better process than demolition by neglect. Because the property maintenance code says, you know, if you have a property in these states of disrepair, you're responsible as a property owner to go and repair those. And, um, you know, we have a lot of cases filed in the support under those. And you've seen the before and afters on, on some of my annual reports from code enforcement. And those are code enforcement using property maintenance ordinance.
So I guess we'll go, let's just address that. Is anybody interested in doing demolition by neglect? I mean, it sounds like it's a lot of work for Allison. You're welcome.
I am certainly not based upon that information.
Yeah, nor am I.
Okay, good. Back to you, Chance. Keep going.
All right, so the other question is, is, let me get this written down. Uh, is, do y'all want to go any steps further with, you know, a design review element under your historic preservation? That's kind of the bigger picture, because that answers all the rest, really.
I think that's Julie's question. Do you want more work, Julie?
Do you want more work?
Well, and I, I guess I was hesitant to say that depending on how far you choose to go in this, depends on whether we actually would need to hire a staff person to become the historic preservation officer. Um, I have mixed feelings on this because there's a lot of developments that happen that if you have these rules, um, you know, it definitely puts the brakes and it may be, be added bureaucracy. But then my office also receives a lot of complaints when we do see a historic structure being demolished or torn down. And so, um, I'm not sure that the community has an overwhelming desire to move fully to a certificate of appropriateness for a, a large-scale district, especially regulating like non-conforming structures, which some districts even do. Um, but I do think that there would be huge outcry if we lost the Junior League building, the Nazareth Academy convent, the courthouse. I mean, I do think that there are some landmarks worthy of protection in our community that our community would be very heartbroken if we were to, um, lose for some reason.
The, the only thing on there, I, from my standpoint, you know, I view this as a battle against preservation versus ownership rights of individuals that own those properties, uh, which I'm a firm believer in, very firm believer. Um, the landmarking, to me, is the only one in there that I think strikes a balance there, but not as posed in here because the way I read this was either owner consent or three-fourth majority of council. From my standpoint, if a owner wants to landmark their building, then we should have something in place that allows them to do that. Successive owners then will know what they're getting when they buy a building. I think it's completely inappropriate for the city to come in and say, we've decided to landmark your building against your wishes potentially. And oh, by the way, here's all the things that are gonna apply to your building now. Uh, to me, I, that, that creates an issue for me. The rest of that, certificate appropriateness and that sort of stuff, I'm, I, 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 I wouldn't be in favor of just because of the property rights question. Uh, but landmarking makes sense to the extent if the Junior League came to the city and said, we want to landmark this building. And they may very well do that, we should have that process in place. But I don't think we should tell anybody, you have to landmark this building.
Would we be interested in incentivizing that? Um, a lot of communities that do have preservation ordinances also have like a 10% tax abatement, um, which is what gets people to then landmark their properties too. But then that could also, you know, get a lot of, um, you know, just your 1930s craftsmen that I'm not sure we want to bother with landmarking. So it'd still be up to the commission to say, yes, this is a significant building or not.
I, I mean, to me, incentives make some sense, but I agree. I think it comes down to what's your criteria? Um, you know, uh, public significance, you know, things of that nature. I mean, you can't just say, okay, it's X amount old. I think I saw a number here that was 50, 50 years old.
Our current demolition has, um, our.
What the hell were all those stories?
We could tie it to the historic resource survey that, um, the county historical commission is working on once we get those, or our existing one, which is quite old with, um, so anything that has become significant in the last 30 or 40 years since that survey was done is not on it.
I, I mean, I'm speaking conceptually. Obviously, the devil's in the details in looking at, okay, what are the actual, you know, definitions and what applies to it and what doesn't? But anyway, I'll shut up and let y'all, anybody else come and talk.
I, I'm not opposed to a, if there's going to be significant restrictions, having a slight carrot dangled in there. But, uh, again, for the property owner's rights, the landmarking makes the most sense. Um, I don't like the idea of somebody telling you what paint color you can use or what you can do, uh, you can't do with your own house. Uh, I don't have much need for, uh, government overreach on your own personal property. And the restrictions that it may put on you if you ever try to sell it.
Right. One thing I'll, I'll say as an op- outside observer is the new construction I've seen in your historic neighborhoods hasn't been wildly out of character. So you may not have a problem.
Yeah, yeah. I, I mean, I've seen several instances where older homes were purchased, demolished, new homes built that looked like they fit the neighborhood from the 1920s. I mean, you know, um, and so I think, I think this is searching for a problem that I'm not sure we have. I agree with you, Chance.
Cool. Other thoughts? Otherwise, that's great feedback, that's exactly what we needed, so.
Julie, I got a question. How many, how many historic districts do we have in the city?
Yes, we have the, the downtown, which is, um, the original town site, except it doesn't go all the way to South Street, it stops at Water Street. Um, and then we have the College Park and Nine Rivers.
What in particular, the College Parks, makes it historic?
I mean, you do have, um, a, a good number of, you know, I think when, College Park is, is at an age where it's just now entering a historic significance. Maybe when it was designated 20 years ago, and I'm not sure there was, um, a lot with historic significance. But we've definitely seen some properties that have, have gained that. And that's where I think College Park is actually much more appropriate as a conservation district. And I think that that was the intent of creating the Nine Rivers and the College Park.
Or is it also the benefits that you can't put certain housing units?
At manufactured home, and that's not appropriate in either one of those districts. Um, so I mean, that's, it, it's done its job.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I, are we gonna talk about neighborhood conservation districts? Or I guess I was thinking, when I was thinking historic district and preservation, I was thinking about that because you said that right now what we have primarily, uh, is for manufactured housing. But I don't know if that's a part of this discussion or if, if we're not.
Yeah, that's kind of a question is, you know, should we actually look at converting your districts that you have now into that? Or somehow just like changing their naming? Because part of what happens now is if you have a developer from the outside and they see, oh, this property's in the historic district, the next thing they go looking for is design guidelines, design standards, and your historic preservation commission, and how does that historic preservation commission behave? And that will get very confusing, uh, for, for them, especially if they're coming from a place like, uh, like a Santorion Austin, that have very, very robust, uh, design review, uh, processes. You know, which where if they even see like, oh, historic district, they may just walk immediately without investigating. And so it's kind of thinking about should there, should we do some change of kind of the nomenclature on it? And then the historic cons- or the neighborhood conservation district provides you that path for the College Park type of circumstances where it's not a historic district, but it's, you know, looking at placing a few extra standards. Uh, and those would have a path that would go through y'all. Um, that path might actually look very similar to the approval path, uh, that is kind of contemplated by the legislature. So we could do something like that.
I was just gonna say on something like that, um, I think it was almost jokingly, but not jokingly, said that really the entire community would benefit from that opportunity, and it's a voluntary opportunity.
Yeah, it's a vol- those are structured, they're voluntary opportunities, they're petition-based, and the, it's still at the discretion of the city council to approve or not. So you, so they could come with that, and the city council could look at it and say, yeah, you're too crazy, go fly a kite. Uh, or they could say, yeah, this is a good idea, we're gonna go forward with this. So it's kind of two checks. It's a petition-based initiation and then a council decision. Makes sense? All right, so last thing, and then I'll be out of y'all's hair. Because I think I was probably on here a lot longer than y'all would have liked, is, uh, next steps, what's gonna happen? So, uh, we're going through, uh, doing the draft refinement to produce that public draft. Uh, that should be about two weeks out, depending on our graphic production. Um, we're looking at a couple of steering committees, uh, coming up to go through the rest of these. We're kind of taking them on the tour of the, uh, of the entire UDO draft. Uh, that final steering committee meeting. Uh, we're also trying to, to line up a public open house, uh, on this. Uh, oftentimes, the, the general public doesn't get super excited about codes. Uh, but we do like to go and have that in there. And then you have the adoption process, you'll have a notification requirement, things like that. So depending on how that lines up, we're gonna be probably hanging out with that active transportation plan in terms of schedule. So that's what we think this looks like going forward, all right?
Awesome. Thanks, Chance.
And then we're looking for an, an, uh, actual, um, effective date of January 1st. So we'll adopt in December and every, new year, new ordinance.
Very good, good discussion.
Okay. You keep, you're good to keep going, or you want to take a break?
Um, I'm good to keep going. Uh, you need to go?
Yeah.
Let's, um.
All right, we'll keep going.
Yeah, let's, let's keep going. I'd like to end Friday earlier.
All right, so, um, next item on the agenda is simply, very briefly, um, Ken Gill will provide an update, uh, on just the ongoing CIP project.
I have a question about UDR, and I'll ask you.
Okay.
Hello, uh.
Hello.
Hello, good afternoon. Uh, Jeff wanted me to go over project by project, five minutes per project. I'm not gonna do that.
Of course he would, he's not here.
I know that. Real quick, is the project schedule is in front of you. It shows where we're at with current projects, and then it also shows the 2024 projects. Uh, some of the highlights I want to just kind of really quickly go over is, we're underway on, on, uh, Tanglewood and College Park. They're actually, uh, contractors a little ahead of schedule, I would say, on those two. Uh, in the 2024 projects, in the CIP, you would see them as listed separately. In the project, in this, in the sheet, I lumped a lot of them together to get a scale of economy. For instance, a lot of those mill and overlays, we don't want to do those independently. We want to try to lump them together to attract that larger contractor to get a scale of economy. A couple of the neighborhoods we're putting together, they're like construction projects. So we, we put them together. But if you have any questions later, feel free to call our office, call myself, call Avery, call Daryl. Uh, we can give you an update with them specifically and just go into more detail. But if you got any questions, I'll answer, answer them now.
What's gonna happen with Castle Hills West?
We're working on, we're, we're waiting for the public. That one is still out there that we're in discussion with contractor, but it does have to cool down. Uh, I did some research on that, on bleeding streets. And back in the late 90s, Texas Tech did a research strictly on the aspect of seal coats. And one of the things they found out is that seal coats cure best at 95 to 97 degrees, ambient temperature and, and below, not cold, but below that. When it gets above 100 and then that heat index gets 114, they'll, they flat said that all the asphalt has issues, whether it's a seal coat from this year or if you'll notice on Main Street that was done three, four years ago, it's even flushing. But either way, we do have to address it. And there is some issues with the, the picking up of the asphalt.
I see on here Crestwood.
Crestwood.
Finish, um, completion date.
We're, we're still.
August.
We're, we're still, yes, we're still moving forward, of course, on that one. We had a meeting last week to talk about the gas company. They are still not moved out of the way, even on the west side, which is between Main and Railroad. They're working on that. They're about two weeks out on that. Just the east side, being if that's two weeks, add another two weeks, possibly another week. We've modified the drainage on that north side of the road where the gas company was in conflict, modified it once again to keep that contractor moving to make great inlets versus the curb inlets where you see a throat going in. So we're doing everything we can to keep that project moving, despite of the gas company.
On Vine Street, recon, reconstruction, where does that start?
Which one?
Vine Street reconstruction.
That one, we're looking at advertising. Of course, it's, it's part of the new budget year.
From what street, what are the cross streets for the project?
Oh, Vine Street, it's from Mockingbird to Red River. It's the section that's absolutely a roller coaster.
Yeah, it is a roller coaster.
We probably won't do anything to the concrete section. It's in pretty good shape, but we'll start where it starts asphalt.
Any further questions for Ken? I'm sorry, Mr. Gill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gill.
All right.
For Joel.
Yeah, moving right along. So, uh, next up. Yeah, I see that. I was like, what are you holding? All right. Well, next up is an update on our, of course, our upcoming bicentennial celebration.
Expect you to spin that like in, in front of Little Caesar's.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, I've never had that kind of job before.
World, world champ, world champ. It's an Olympic sport now, I think.
Signatory?
Probably.
I think, everything's an Olympic sport nowadays.
Yes. Well, council, thank you all for having me here this afternoon, just to give you a brief update about our bicentennial. At any point you have any questions, feel free to stop me, clarify anything. But there's been a lot of work behind the scenes. We're very excited to talk to you today about some of the initiatives that we have for the bicentennial year. So we'll get going. Basically, just to jump all point, three goals for our bicentennial when we were deciding on, you know, what kind of programming to come up with, events, activities, what to promote. Of course, highlighting our rich heritage and history, increasing visitation to Victoria, so increasing economic activity with supporting, whether creating our own events or supporting other events, programming and, and activities that would bring people to town. And then looking to the future, promoting Victoria as a modern city, fantastic quality of life. We're not seeing this as a way to look back on our past, but also look back on our future, not just promote us to visitors, but potential new residents. And we're not the only ones celebrating, which is the exciting thing. It's actually a very fortuitous that 2024 has a lot of anniversaries going on. Saint Mary's Catholic Church, you can see that, the white, blue logo there at the top, they're celebrating two hundred years as a parish and a hundred and twenty years as a church. BISD is celebrating a hundred and twenty-five years. The Webster Chapel Congregation, a hundred and sixty. The Country Club is gonna turn a hundred, 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 hundred. Ditar is turning a hundred. The Mumford Family Reunion is a hundred and twenty. The Symphony is turning fifty. Mid Coast Family Services, forty. The Ballet Theater, forty. Billy Teekatan Recovery Outreach, twenty-five years. The Welder Center, twenty. And the Daughters of the American Revolution, here in Tex, in Victoria, just found that out, ninety years. Blanche DeLeon informed me of that the other day. So we've been engaging with a lot of these groups, almost all of them to, to this date, and seeing what activities they have going on, what kind of events, and how we can further promote what they have going on as well. An update on the Martine DeLeon and Patricia de la Garza statue, it's going very well. Armando Hinaosa is very far along in the process. About the middle of next month, Blanche DeLeon is gonna be going down to Laredo for last looks. I'll be joining her down there to take some photos and video as she's, you know, looking at the, the last, you know, final details are done to the, the statue. That's our most recent photo there from probably about a month ago, from Armando's son, David. And then they'll be looking to pour, take it to the Foundry for pouring in December. So it's on track as scheduled. Mr. Hinaosa, the final a hundred thousand dollars is payable at the completion of the contract. And we've been discussing with Monuments of Victoria about the base. So it would be a granite base, about two feet high, about five feet wide and three feet deep. That would match the color of the Six Flags monument in front of it. Like I said, it's only about two feet high, so you could be looking at Martine and Patricia, looking past them up towards the Six Flags monument. So it all should flow very well together. And that, of course, is on track for February, all of that, and to be ready for the April thirteenth dedication and ribbon cutting. Also some public art projects. We have the Lorette Street Art Underpass Art Project going on, along, of course, but also a potential project utilizing the amazing portrait of Patricia de la Garza that was commissioned by the DeLeon family. That portrait was done, some of y'all were at the unveiling this last April at the Victoria Art League. And so there's a potential to be using maybe possibly some facade grants, as well as working with Katie Connolly and the grants administrator to find a couple of possibly other grants that could support the, the full funding of that. KPG Commercial has agreed to place it. That's the parking garage of One O'Connor Plaza facing the, the library. They've found an artist out of Houston who's already agreed to do it. It's just the funding component of it right now, but there could be some grants that pay for that. And we just think that would be a really fantastic piece that people, people could see as they're coming into downtown Victoria. So that is a potential project that we've been working on. Here's a little list of all the promotions that we have going on. I'll be going through them here in a second. Of course, you've seen our branding, the home of the Six Flags. We worked with Madden Media to develop that. They're also very far along in our tourism branding study. We have the logo and the guidelines. And of course, this is a moment where I'd like to maybe solicit, or if you'd just like to think about it, get back to me on it. We're gonna start here in the next coming weeks lending our branding out to different groups to promote themselves as bicentennial events. But we want to have three, a couple of standards to follow, not just giving it to everybody, right? So the standards that we'll be looking at is looking at an event from an organization celebrating a significant anniversary in 2024, so some of that list I mentioned earlier. An event that relates to Victoria's history, so anything that Victoria Preservation puts on. You know, they're not necessarily celebrating an anniversary, but what they do is historically significant. Same thing for Museum of the Coastal Bed. Or an officially partnered bicentennial event. A very good example of this is the Chick-fil-A Young Life 5K. They want to do that downtown and branded as a bicentennial 5K, a bicentennial run. So in that instance, we're considering them an officially partnered event because they're willing to change some aspects of their name, to use our logo, to use our branding, and work very closely with us in organizing their event. So that's a, that's a good example of what those kind of partnerships can look like. And I don't need any feedback right now, but if you want to think about that, get back to me at a later date, or when I'm done with my presentation, have any thoughts. I'm, I'm open to, to other possibilities, but you know, right now, that's what we're considering as far as having officially branded bicentennial events. This is our bicentennial website. It's actually live today as of 1:00 PM. It's at explorevictoriatexas.com. It is a sub-theme, so if you go to explorevictoriatexas.com, you look at our main menu on the far left, you'll see Victoria TX 200. You click on that and it'll take you to this page. We've got a fair amount of content up there already. We'll be adding more in the coming weeks, but we'll be doing a press release on Tuesday about this site being live, as well as a couple of solicitations I'm gonna tell you about in a second. This was where my visual, visual aid comes in. The signage here. We're looking to redo some signage in downtown Victoria. On the top left, you see the green and white historical tour signs. That's actually for our Old Victoria Driving Tour. We've always thought that just hasn't been very clear. Because that's a very popular activity for people to do when they come to town. It's probably one of those popular things we get asked about in the visitor center. So to make that more clear, to jazz those up a little bit, call it Old Victoria Driving Tour, use some different graphics and coloring. Something that comes out from our branding study with Madden Media, our tourism branding study. And our Streets Department, we've already been talking with them, they can do those. And as well as, this is a really exciting project, and I've got the sign right here. This is our historical street name signage. So we're not naming, renaming the, the streets. They're gonna stay the official names, but underneath it, you can see here the, the historic name. So Murray's original name, when it was Guadalupe, when we were Guadalupe, Victoria, and this research is from eighteen thirty-five from Dr. Shook, Robert Shook, the street's name was originally Manchola. So there's a number of streets like that. There's actually a hundred and twenty of these signs that we're gonna reproduce, and you can see the names there that they were originally called. And actually, ten of those are individuals, and that is the original Street of Ten, original Ten Friends, from the Street of Ten Friends. Empresas Libertad and Caí de los Días Amigos are not names. Those are just, you know, of names of people. So at all of those intersections throughout downtown Victoria, where those streets are, we're gonna be changing the signs out to look like this. And that's something we're gonna keep up well past our bicentennial. So it's, it's a very exciting project. And again, our Streets Department can do those as well. Guided tours of Old Victoria. One of the things we've always heard in the visitor center is I wish we, the guy, the Old Victoria, the Driving Tour wasn't, you know, we had somebody take us along it. We didn't have to do it ourselves. Something I've heard for a long time, and I thought, what an opportunity in our bicentennial year to, to initiate these. So we have twelve dates, once a month. We've already talked with Victoria Preservation, they're on board, the county as well, to start with the Courthouse Tour on those mornings, then a trolley tour of the Old Victoria Driving Tour. Those have already been reserved with Texas Coast Limousines. It will be a ticketed event. And the Pump House has also agreed to do a, a prefeets lunch after the end of it, so that will all be included in the ticket price. We think this is a fantastic promotion to pull people in from out of town. There are some really, especially that April twentieth weekend, I'll add, is also the Historic Homes Tour. That's a weekend right after our bicentennial. That could be a huge weekend for history in Victoria. So this is a very exciting project and something that we're looking forward to. DeLeon Art and Artifacts, we, you know, it's not just the historical pieces from the DeLeon family. There's actually some, some artists in the family as well. Santiago Jim DeLeon, you know, the carriage of, DeLeon family carriage, eighteen eighty-two, that's gonna be at the Five Points Museum displayed for a time period in 2024, the Victoria Art League. You see on the right there, that's a piece called El Encantado. That's from Jim DeLeon. They, they will be showing his art and other works like it throughout, starting in April and for some considerable amount of time. We are still working on getting displays in City Hall of the Sword of DeLeon. That's actually owned by BISD at the Victoria Regional History Center at UH. The provenance is all kind of a lot of parties involved. But we were talking with our legal department. We've actually finally took some time to contact an appraiser who's willing to look at it so we could possibly get some insurance on it, because that has been a condition that BISD and UHV wanted to see. So we're in, we're in the process of getting that, but we really hope to display that, those items at City Hall. A couple of the other ones are actually, you know, in possession of the Victoria Public Library, like the coin purse of Patricia de la Garza. It's actually what she, the first major donation to the church was in that purse, and that's actually at the library and, and the storage there. So that's a piece that we'd like to display. So things like that throughout the year at Victoria City Hall. Public memorabilia displays, we, we want the, we want the community to get on this and join the fun. So we have six different periods throughout the year. Next week, already, we'll be doing calls. We have a committee that will be reviewing that. Calls for, for public memorabilia. We have all of these different themes. We think it's gonna be a lot of fun, a lot of interest from the community to, to offer up their treasures and, and, you know, that's just, that's us, we, we don't have those two items. That's just an example of some stuff. I will say though, the Armadillo Confab Exposition poster was at an estate sale the other week, and I could, could try to go get it, but it was already gone. So that kind of stuff is, is what we'll be soliciting from the community. We'll also be doing a, our partnership with Bandwango that we do annually. We do the Yule of Shopping Victoria, the Tacos and Marks Trail. We're gonna be doing an original townsite digital tour. So we're gonna work with the Victoria Preservation, Blanche DeLeon, Victoria County Historic Commission to identify spots in downtown Victoria where significant individuals lived. The user of that program will be able to go to that location. It'll be geolocated. They can tag, they could check in, and it will pull up photos, video, copy telling the story of that individual from Victoria's past. You know, there was talks about spray painting the sidewalks with names of people, or spray painting QR codes that they could scan and pull up. We think this is a, a real flexible way to do that same kind of thing. And once we told the preservation folks that, well, you know, that's something we can do and we were willing to, to pay for it through our Bandwango partnership, they jumped on board. So this is a, a very cool project. We'll also be doing a number of merchandise items selling out at the visitor center, some for sale, some for free. For instance, more expensive items like the flags and banners will be for sale, but posters, buttons, stickers, pin, those kind of things, pins will be, will be free promo items. We're using a majority of those with local providers, talking with Outburst Advertising, M&amp;R Print Shop, those kind of folks, just to name a few. But that will be on sale in the coming weeks in the visitor center. We've, but we've got pricing and everything like that. We just haven't ordered those yet, but there's a, a good plan for merchandise. We'll also be working with Communications to gather the stories from Victoria residents. You know, whether they've got a fun childhood memory, an experience at a job, anything that we think might be an interesting story for these individuals to tell, especially from some of our older residents who have these memories of, of what Victoria used to be like. So interviewing them a little short, the example there is kind of what the City of Bryan did for their one fiftieth, two to three minute videos that they had posted of just really kind of interesting stories. So soliciting that from the community. It's a way for them to get involved and, and maybe share some of those things, and a little, like, to live on in, in a format like YouTube. Also a time capsule, doing that in DeLeon Plaza on April thirteenth. Here's just some of the ideas of the things that we had to put in there.
He's, he's gonna be here, right?
Richard Branson, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying. I sent him an email. Oh, no. That's just the example of the, the capsule that, that we'll have there. So we thought it'd be an interesting way to get input from the community to where they could, you know, have a part of it without like sending us a bunch of stuff to put in there, is to solicit videos from different school groups and youth groups, you know, saying hi to the people fifty years from now, or what it's like living right now in 2023, and that putting on some kind of safe device, like a solid state hard drive or something that, you know, fifty years from now could be looked at and, and reviewed. So it's a way for a lot of the community to get involved and send us something, but it's not necessarily a bunch of stuff we have to physically put in a time capsule in addition to some stuff that we'll be putting in there. We think it'll be a fun, fun thing to do. And that is just a short list of the events right there. That's, that's a short, there, there will be more to come, I'm sure. But as already, we have a very large list of events that we're partnering with, that we're gonna be promoting as bicentennial events. Those are all listed right now at the bicentennial website. Those are all up there, so you can see more there and more details. But I also want to finish up with what are we planning for our bicentennial? What are we planning for April thirteenth? So it's gonna begin, it's basically three events going on that day. It's gonna start off very exciting in the morning with a service project. If any of y'all are familiar with the Texas A&amp;M's big event, something like that, a citywide service project, think our, think our cleanups, our citywide cleanups, but, but much bigger. So, you know, while the other events later in the day are about our history, this is about moving forward, focusing on our future, giving back to Victoria, and starting that day off like that. And then in the afternoon will be the DeLeon Statue Dedication and DeLeon Plaza Expansion Ribbon Cutting. Of course, we invited a lot of dignitaries from around the state. I've worked very closely with Keisha and City Manager's Office about, with, with those kind of things and who to invite, and working with the mayor on that. The DeLeon Descendants also want to do a very nice gesture of one descendant from all of the ten children of Martine and Patricia de la Garza to place a wreath on their monument. I think that'd be a very beautiful gesture to do. And then a ribbon cutting for the, for the DeLeon Plaza Expansion. And then that evening is, is the party. The, the bicentennial ball is what we're branding it right now, but we've got a committee. Many of you have appointed those individuals, been doing a great job. We've got different subcommittees that's planned for the evening of Saturday, April thirteenth, from six to ten thirty. We've already secured a band. Some, still discussing menu and things like that and getting pricing, having different kind of entertainment through different groups, just, just a way for the community to come together. Where, it's, it will be a ticketed event, but it's gonna be at the community center, and the pricing will be able to allow some folks, pokes to still come. But there's gonna be a lot of sponsorship opportunities and, and hopefully dignitaries, local, state, and even national, and even international, if we can get it, get them to come, can attend. And then finally, a lot of this might be exciting news for folks, bringing back a, a signature community event. Right now, it's called Fall Community Event, because we're still gonna work on branding it. Think the spirit of Boot Fest, but it's not gonna be called Boot Fest. A free event, at least for this year, on October fourth and fifth, 2024. I've actually already got interest from folks like Mother Cluckers Downtown to do the vendors, as well as Hot Rod Tour Texas to do a car show. So the City of Victoria staff can focus on the logistics of the event as well as the historical aspect of it, and some of these other, you know, necessary activities you need to have for an event, car show, vendors, that kind of stuff can be done with a lot of great downtown partners that we have now, which really wasn't the case four or five years ago when we were doing Boot Fest. The city had to do almost all the heavy lifting. But there's a lot of people in downtown now who can do that kind of stuff and, and benefit them and benefit us by taking some of the load off of us. So that's just gonna be a really fantastic event. There'll be more to come on that. But that is moving forward, and, and the, the official name and branding and all of that will be announced in the coming months. And at this time, I can take any questions. And at this time, I can take any questions.
Looks great, Joel.
Alrighty, thank you very much.
Excited for the bicentennial and all the work that everybody's put into it.
I like your son.
That's great.
He's going to go install it right now, himself.
Chief Fox.
Alright, so last but not least, we got one final update for you. Of course, Chief Fox, I know that he couldn't sleep all night just looking forward to this presentation today. Right, Chief?
Absolutely. Ready to go.
So just to set the stage a little bit, Chief, if you don't mind, so one of the things that, that is important to keep in mind, really as we talk about a lot of these different master plans, is the, is the reality that going into fiscal year 25, we're going to transition back to a five-year C I P planning window. Our current C I P planning window ends at fiscal year 26. So the plan that's just been approved is 24, 25, and 26. Once we get to 25, that'll jump up all the way to 29. And so in order for us to have, you know, educated, productive conversations with you over the course of the next, you know, nine months, around what projects we plug into the new planning window, it's important that you begin to start getting exposed to what the needs are, so that we can have that tough conversation right around how much fun, how much money gets allocated towards what type of project. And one of those things that we really haven't talked enough about, at least in recent years, is of course related to fire stations. We obviously have spent the bulk of the last few years focused on the Public Safety Headquarters Building, and that's taken up, you know, a lot of capacity for us. But now that that's, you know, flowing, I think it's, it's, it's appropriate to talk about fire stations. And, and with Chief's retirement happening this month, we felt it was appropriate to give him an opportunity to share his plan himself. I mean, he's been talking to Derek and I about this plan for years, I feel like, but just had never had the, the formal opportunity to present it to you. And so we wanted to make sure you could hear directly from him and ask him any questions that you might have, so I hope that helps. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Mayor Pro Tim, Council, thank you very much, and this will be quick. I just want to concur with Ken Gill, this 114 degree heat index, nothing like that, our fire trucks don't like that, we're having a hard time keeping on the road. So it's not just your streets don't feel bad, fire trucks don't like it either. Well, thank you, as Mr. Garza said.
And we do? I said, and we do as people? We don't like it either.
None of us do, but machinery does not like that temperature either. As Mr. Garza said, we just want to present this to you, this has been on my Fire Chief bucket list for a long time, is to get this pulled together and presented to you. And obviously, things can change down the road, but this is just kind of our staff's concept of what the fire station master plan should look like. And it takes us all the way to 2040. When we developed this plan, we really liked to look at other master plans and look at other things to make this plan. One of that is the age of our infrastructure, the age of our stations. We look at our last I S O report, that was in 2020, that really gives us the bulk of kind of what you need to do to maintain your I S O classification. We look at the comprehensive plan, the 2035 comprehensive plan, and then we also look at the thoroughfare master plan. So those are the things that we really look at that kind of tell us where the fire stations need to be. Right out of the 2020 I S O report are kind of the things that, that, that we need to do by 2030 to maintain that I S O two rating, or to maintain a, a adequate fire, fire service for the city of Victoria. One, the obvious one is provide a seventh fire station, along with a seventh fire apparatus, provide additional staffing with existing apparatus. I S O likes to see four firefighters on each apparatus, we currently run with three. We think that's a more efficient model, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Provide two additional engine companies deployed at our fire stations, one and four where, where our ladder trucks are. Once again, I S O believes in having separate ladder companies and engine companies, that's how you get a better score or get to a one, along with the staffing for those trucks. And, and so those are the key, three main ingredients, if you will, that we'll need to focus on moving to 2030 and beyond to maintain that I S O two. We have some, some alternatives of that, that we think are a little more efficient, a little more cost effective, and that's what we're going to talk about. Our plan to maintain that I S O two classification is to relocate Station Five somewhere on the west side of Victoria, between the fiscal years 25 and 27. In 28, start increasing staffing on our current apparatus. As I said, I S O likes to see, you know, four-person staffing, we're not totally recommending that, but we do think we can make some adjustments and put some staff in some strategic, strategic places that'll help us. Open Fire Station Seven on the east side of Victoria by 2030, and then beyond that, in 2035, look at relocating Fire Station Number Three. And then in 2040, 2040, as, you know, the city grows, especially out of the northwest, is putting Station Five in place. So we're going to run through kind of.
Station Eight.
Station Eight, excuse me, Station Eight, I'm sorry.
We're keeping you focused.
Yeah, we were. Station Eight, and we'll kind of look and kind of see what that looks like on a map for Victoria as we move forward. Our infrastructure, the key takeaway here is Fire Station Five, which was opened in 1992, and Fire Station Three, which was opened up in 1987, those stations will be over 38 years old by the time we hit 2030. And that is the, basically the effective life of a fire station, you know. Station One, we just remodeled that one and reopened it, and, and that was a 40-year, that station opened in 1982, so we got 40 years out of that. So we really have to look at those two stations as we move forward and either renovating them or relocating and building new stations. We're sitting pretty well at all the other facilities. As y'all have all seen, the comprehensive plan shows kind of where our growth is. Our previous I S O plans did a great job of predicting where we needed to put fire stations. Station Four, right there on that east side of Victoria, off of Salem Road, is covering Placido Benavides really well, in that area and any future growth. Station Six, which is up on Ball Airport Road, really covered the city's annexation and expansion out there with a lot of the residential growth that we've seen out there. And then as we look at the thoroughfare master plan, we also see, expect more growth to that east side of Victoria, kind of between the airport and the city, as well as the northwest section of Victoria. And those two are the really hotspots for us that we feel like we need to focus on over the next 10 to 15 years. Obviously, that east point or east triangle of Victoria has already seen significant growth, especially industrial and commercial growth. And that's kind of where we're predicting seven needs to go. And then as you look out to the northwest, we anticipate, based on that other information, more growth, more things to happen, as we just heard earlier, that, you know, there may be development out there, more residents, more homes, things of that nature to that area of Victoria. As of today, I wanted to give you just a quick snapshot of what the Victoria Fire Department looks like today, so as we move forward, you can kind of see how we grow. We're a Class Two, which is great, you can't get much better than that, except for a one, and that's, that's really expensive. But we got six fire stations, six fire apparatus, 188 firefighters, and 24 EMS personnel for a total of 112 operational staff, that's the men and women that are on the fire trucks and on the ambulances, that, that, that is not our total staff, that is just our operational staff. And that's kind of what our four-point, four-minute, four-minute response time looks like per station. So that's kind of gives you that ideal coverage area, those funny shaped polygons give you the ideal coverage area for, for the, from the stations, and you want to hopefully have as much as a city in that blue, in a blue polygon as possible. I S O says, this is what we recommend, this is what you need to be a one, this is what you need to be to hit that, that one category. They're recommending seven fire stations, nine fire apparatus, 117 firefighters, and 24 EMS personnel. The nine fire apparatus goes back to what I originally said, is they like to see that separate ladder company and separate engine company at the same station. We don't believe that's an efficient model, there's a lot, Mr. Garza knows, there's a lot of sitting around on that ladder truck because they only go to certain types of calls. Over the years, we have merged those into one, and, and have one unit that can do both, what a ladder truck and an engine can do. But I S O likes to see them separate, they also like to see, once again, four personnel on, on the fire apparatus. Once again, we don't think that's necessarily the most efficient model, we run, we run with three, we think it's pretty effective. But we do think in the future, as some key strategic apparatus, putting additional personnel or two there will be beneficial to us. And then the EMS personnel, they really don't look at that, but I wanted you to see kind of what we, because we still have that responsibility, what that looks like. Our recommendation, our recommendation, staff's recommendation, is that we move to seven fire stations, just as we kind of talked about, is that, that eastern section of the city of the Victoria needs that seventh fire station. Seven fire apparatus, so that's one fire apparatus at each station, 109 firefighters and 24 EMS personnel. We are suggesting and recommending that two of those apparatus, the ones that do both ladder truck and engine company work, have a couple additional personnel on them, just because it's, it's helpful, they can also jump on other apparatus when we get busy. They can also flex down onto medic units and cover, you know, that responsibility if we need to when we get busy. So that additional personnel will also help us with our I S O evaluation. And that would bring us to a total operational staff of 133 personnel by 2030, and that does include the nine additional personnel that'll need to be cover, that'll be needed to cover Station Seven. And this map just shows you the progression of, okay, by, in that fiscal year 27, 25 to 27, we relocate Station Five to kind of that northwestern part of Main Street. Two different kind of configurations there that really fill in the gaps that we need to along that major corridor and thoroughfare of the city. No change in staffing at that time. We are recommending, once again, by fiscal year 28 or sometime in that time period, to add that additional staff on those two trucks to kind of help us with operational needs. That would bring our staffing up to 124. And then, as you see, by 2030, we would add Station Seven into the mix and really do a great job of covering the city in those polygons to real, to ensure that we had great fire and EMS coverage. Once again, that additional station would increase our staffing up to 133. And as we move on, 2035 and beyond, relocation of Station Three, kind of sliding that a little further down, because if you noticed on previous slides, there, there is a gap in that south side of Victoria. But relocating Station Three a little further to the west and south would help with that. Plus, right now, we're covering a large section of a floodplain, which nothing ever is going to be developed in there along the Lone Tree Creek. So moving, sliding a little bit further south of the city will be beneficial, as well as having Station Seven up there. And this is just a very simple timeline of kind of what we foresee happening as we move forward and get closer to 2030. And I'll be happy to answer any questions on that, wanted to be really quick in the spirit of Mayor Bocknight, he likes to quick. But anyway, be happy to go back and talk about anything.
Can you just go back to the map that just showed that one? Just to kind of show the big picture element of it, just so that it's fresh in our minds, right?
Yep.
Because one of the things that we can't lose sight of is the fact that we do currently, you know, have contractual obligation for the county.
Correct.
And so I think, you know, when we think of growth in the county, or what are the areas that are, the county keeps us busier in, it's obviously, as you suspect, right, the more populated areas out in the county. And so you can see how by having seven, eight, and relocated three, actually also helps with response out in the more populated areas of the county. And so I think the challenge for us is going to be trying to, A, fund this, right, but be able to also not forget, you know, the impact that serving the county has on this. So it's just something to keep in mind.
I have a question about I S O ratings.
Yes, sir.
For example, if you live in the county, if you live in Quail Creek, I believe they have a water system, so their I S O is.
A little better than most people in the county, yes, correct.
What other factors determine the I S O rating?
Great question. One of the big ones and one that we do really well in is our water infrastructure. That is a big component of the I S O rating, and thanks to Mr. Gill and his staff, we, we get max points, basically, in our water infrastructure. And that's, that's a key play, and that doesn't, that doesn't go outside the city limits, though.
Well, and I was glad you brought that up, does it have to do with water pressure? Because we talked about a water tower in certain part of town for reasons.
It has to do with water pressure, water volume, number of fire hydrants, those type of things. That's where the engineer comes into the I S O rating, is evaluating and determining, you know, how much water is available for firefighting activities. But really, as you said, it breaks down to number of fire hydrants, the flow of the fire hydrants, and then the pressure.
Yeah, and because of the, the correlation between the I S O rating and insurance rates, the whole premise is that, you know, the better that you can potentially lessen the loss of property, right, that it has an impact on your insurance rate. That's why they look at all of those little things.
Absolutely.
What percentage of cities have two ratings, one ratings, three ratings?
Oh, we could probably name the ones off the top of, like, on one hand.
Yeah, there is very few cities.
Tyler used to be a one.
Tyler, they may be, typically where you're seeing the ones nowadays are in the metroplexes where they're very small cities, and they don't have a lot of square, square mileage, it's easy for them to do. You get cities like Victoria, Bryan, College Station, they're probably in that two category because they do have more square miles to cover. But getting to that one's very expensive, especially if you're like Victoria and you have a large footprint that you have to cover. Because, you know, part of the I S O evaluation is those polygons you're looking at, they look at that and they calculate how many road miles are covered within those polygons, and that, that determines a score and evaluation on the fire department. How many staff are at each, you know, you know, fire station, that, that applies into the score, so a lot of those things matter. Great question.
Chief, I'd like to thank you, you know, you talked about what it takes to get an I S O of one, and, and what their staffing recommendations are. I know that a lot of times people live in ivory towers, make rules for, for us, and you try to achieve those, but to look at our needs, what best works for Victoria, and, and applying that, and showing that, I appreciate you applying what's, what's common sense and good for Victoria, not necessarily good from somebody else's recommendations.
Thank you, thank you, staff works hard on that, and our staff work really hard to be, we say we're really lean. We operate very lean, and we want to do that way, because it's, it's just the best use of money and best use of resources, so thank you.
Much appreciated.
Alright, that's the end of the questions, I just want to say, this is my last council meeting, I just want to say to Council, Mr. Garza, the City Manager's Staff, it's been a true honor and a pleasure working with you, and thank you for all the support that you've given me, the Victoria Fire Department, we could not ask for a better elected body to serve and a better community to work in, thank you very much.
Well, Chief, it's been an incredible honor to work with you all these years, and we're better off because of you, so thank you.
And hopefully y'all can make the retirement celebration at the end of the month.
Yes.
Well, that wraps up.
I think that concludes our meeting, time's 2:59, we did pretty well. Ms. Hilbert? Yep.